All this meeting of the work session to order for the Anchorage School District. This is a work session on March 18th at 4:01 PM. And roll call in the room, we have member Jacobs, member Donley, myself, member Hallman and member Lessons. Uh, missing is member Bellamy, Wilson and Higgins. Do we have anyone online? Okay, and the members are currently online. I think we do have a quorum, just barely. And uh, I will turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, so today's work session will focus on the changes to school start times that went into effect this year. So we'll begin the presentation with an overview of the timeline of events that led to the decision and we'll provide a snapshot of some relevant data points. Um, two other things I want to note. Um, one is the ASD has implemented a number of changes in addition to the school start times, which include sixth grade to middle school as one example. Um, and there are others, but what we're attempting to do is to use a Chi square methodology to discern if there's statistical significance um and changes from this year to last year. But with all that said, because there are so many different inputs um into how ASD is operating these past couple of years, we really have to look at any data point with a grain of salt. Um, just so we can look at this through the research lens, we can only discern correlation, not causation from this particular type of methodology. And any correlation or statistically significant data point is reflective of all the inputs, not necessarily school start times by itself. In fact, if we were interested in uh more rigorous type of methodology, that would require um likely multiple years according to research best practice. So with that said, we're going to show you some interesting data points.
And I would like to note that member Bellamy has joined us in the room.
All right. Well, good afternoon. Um, so our very first spot, we, we're gonna just kind of go back in time and talk a little bit about the historical context. In January of 2023, the school board directed this administration to research available options for school start time changes. Engage in information gathering activities and provide a recommendation to the board for consideration. So between February and March of 2023, we collaborated with Shannon Bingham of Western Demographics and carried out um 14 focus groups. We conducted interviews with numerous medical professionals, hosted three community town hall meetings, collected 9,900 survey responses from the broader ASD community. And in April of 2023, we had a recommendation. Um, we presented the findings of all that work that we did and then presented a recommendation to the board and on May 9th of that year, um, the board approved schools, new school start times, which would take effect a year later. And I, and I just bring up that in that recommendation, it was for that particular year, but the board, of course, gave us an extra year to prepare for that. Um, just kind of looking at school start times and as far as board goals go, um, really the board goal on the percent of students, students graduation, college career, life readiness is measured by the four-year graduation rate will increase from 81% in June of 2023 to 90% in June of 2028. And of course, the initiative description is uh changing the start times and during that change, we changed elementary went from nine AM um to starting at eight AM, middle school moved from eight fifteen PM to nine thirty AM and high school moved from seven thirty AM to eight forty-five AM. And when we get kind of, we're trying to figure out all the different kind of data points that we can look at and the first one that we're going to look at is um daily attendance rates. Um, the data for the next few slides was pulled from the data dashboard um just yesterday. Um, and it's around the actual attendance. And if you look as absenteeism by month, we have a four-year look at this 2021 and 2022 to the current year for the first semester. Um, there really isn't hardly anything of significance um changes, you know, in 2021, we had 88% for overall attendance and in, in this year in the first semester, we had 89.7. So it really isn't that big of a difference within those four years. And so statistically, it is not statistically significant. We didn't have hardly any kind of change for the first semester of this year. When we break that up into elementary, middle and high, the elementary attendance rate um went from 89 to 90. Just over, just over one and a half percent change in the four years. Um, and that number really doesn't reflect any significant changes as well. So they're not statistically significant. And we do have it broken down by month. If you, if you look, um, we kind of, although it's very minimal that it does change August, September, October, November, December, but that does that across all four years. Middle school um also went from almost 89% to 90%, so just a increase of 1%. Um, and is not statistically significant. And then high school um had a about six tenths of 1% change in the four years. Um, and just slightly less than last year, 12 hundredths of a percentage point from um last year to this year. So none of those were statistically significant as far as attendance rate goes. When we move over and start looking at chronic absenteeism and percent of chronic absenteeism is of course the percent of students who miss 10% of school days excused or unexcused. Um, this data we pulled on uh February 4th from the data dashboard and it is also having to do with the first semester. Um, we, we only started measuring chronic absenteeism last year, so we only have two years of data right now for the first semester. Um, elementary and middle school did have significant that are statistically significant um changes in elementary decreased little over or about a percentage point and a half and middle school actually decreased over three percentage points. So those are, you know, we decrease chronic absenteeism, absenteeism, we want to decrease. So those two um are statistically significant. The high school level though, um, that one did go up a little and that level is not statistically significant. When you look at period one F rates and we were just looking at period one on this. Um, this was pulled from Q and excludes like alternative school charter schools. Um, and then we also excluded sixth graders because we had the sixth grade change going and it was hard to take out the three schools that had the sixth graders beforehand. So we only looked at grades seven and eight from middle school. And the F rates for middle school went down nine tenths of a percentage point. High school went down four tenths of a percentage point. So overall, we went down about six tenths of a percentage point. Not statistically significant as far as F grades, F rates go. And I do want to note that these grades were after our extended school years and those opportunities for students to actually make up their grades if they weren't passing right at the end of the first semester. So this is actual data that happened and it's actual Fs for the um first period, semester one, first period grades.
I do want to interject real quick that member Higgins has joined us online as of a few minutes ago.
All right. Then we have a little more on attendance and the next one is on AM and period one tardies in elementary school. We take, we take attendance in the morning and in the afternoon. So we're looking at the AM tardies and the period one for the secondary schools um for the tardies. And of course, and again, we excluded the alternative charter and qualification divisions in all grade six students. And for these, all of these are significantly um statistically significant. The elementary had an, had an increase of tardies of five percentages, which percentage points. Middle school, however, decreased eight tenths and high school did go up four tenths of a percentage point. So those, all, all of those were considered statistically significant uh results. Now kind of looking at the report summary, um, the first thing is like Dr. Bryant said is really to evaluate a big change like start times. You really, after one semester, it's almost impossible to really have a correlation to start times to any of the data. So really you need to look at a longitudinal study or have at least two to three years of data to actually determine um whether or not the school tart start times are, are uh how effective they are or ineffective. So um, looking at that, we're, you know, we're kind of looking at different types of data points that we might be able to um pull in. Um, we've looked at a little bit on uh mental health because that's one of the things that we're looking at. The problem is like with mental health, we, we don't have a really good mechanism to actually uh measure that right now. We have a lot of different pieces, but none of it um really is good right now. We have some uh pieces coming in and we're adopting a data, a data program for that, but right now we don't have that. So really looking at um, we need more time to be able to determine whether or not the data is of, with school start times. Um, and if whenever we have a big change, there's always an adjustment period. Um, we heard, we literally, this data was for one semester after we started. Um, it's essential to consider that students, parents, the community all have to have some time to adjust um and get into routines to new schedules. Um, sometimes schools, students take up to several months um to get into those new types of routines. And these adjustments phases could influence both attendance and academic performance in the short term. So um, we really want to look at the data over an extended have some internal factors. Um, of course, along with uh start times, we did move the sixth graders to middle school. We also have the late start PLC Mondays. Um, we have some PBIS implementations as well. So there's a lot of things that are overlapping. So being able to pull out exactly this is start time um data is pretty difficult. So we need to be able to have more time. And then we also have external factors when we're looking at attendance and in grades and stuff, you know, weather conditions, holidays, socioeconomic challenges and shifts in school policies can significantly influence attendance and academic performance and um sometimes these are out of our control, right? So we have to look at those as well when we're making any kind of analysis. Um, because they could complicate things as well. So I guess at the, at the end here, I just want to reiterate what Dr. Bryant said around. We need more time. We need to be able to have more data. We need to be able to have more data points to be able to have anything to be able to show any kind of correlation to um attendance or academics as far as um as school start times affect go. So that's it for our, I know this is very quick, but that's it for our um our brief. If you have any questions, we'd be willing to try to answer them.
I'm wondering if there's been any feedback about after school activities and if they've been affected one way or another.
And before we start um discussing this, I want to be clear that we intentionally focused on the major quantitative factors because that's the data that we had uh at hand. And any commentary on any qualitative data points are purely speculative and should not be used to for decision-making purposes. But um our team is welcome to share anything that you've heard anecdotally.
Anecdotally, I, I, I'll tell you, middle school um events in that evening, especially when it's dark have been, been an issue that they, they sometimes stay much later than they have in the past. Um, when they're having events, of course. Um, but as far as like the number of students that are participating, I don't believe there was any kind of real significant reduction in the number of students that actually participated. Um, but we also haven't gone through the entire school year yet with all of the different events.
And member Higgins has a question.
Did you hear you? Oh, sorry.
And he may be having trouble on muting and we'll come back around. Member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. And appreciate the, the presentation and the update. I understand that there's a lot of caveats there because the datas that we have is only for a semester. Um, I was following along using the data dashboard. And one of the, the areas of concern for me when we made this change was the combination of PLC Mondays plus the, the latest middle school start time for a group of students that couldn't um transport themselves to school without assistance. Um, I was interested to look at the breakdown and it seems like middle school. Um, vulnerable populations are CIT, uh child in transition or homeless students, economically disadvantaged, um English language learner, free and reduced lunch students. All seem to have um what, if it, if the trend holds, what could be statistically significant bumps at the middle school level. Um, I won't ask about that because it's only a semester. And so I'll pivot to a question about what I think I remember from our conversation when we moved in this direction was we were planning to make um our buildings available before school on PLC days. Um, are we still doing that? What has the usage been like? Um, any information on that we can share?
You know, I have it other than the first few weeks of the school year, I haven't really heard anything. Um, Kirsten, have you heard anything at all?
Um, could you just repeat the question, member Jacob? Sorry about that.
Yeah, sure. No problem. Um, I think the question boils down to how are we still making our buildings available and the middle school buildings available early during PLC Mondays, given the, I think 10:30 time essentially, and what has the usage been?
Yes, thanks for repeating the question. I appreciate it. Um, so the answer is yes. Um, we still are letting parents um drop students off. Our security is there. Um, it's, it's not necessarily um really well utilized at this point in the year as people have gotten into a routine.
I would also of the groups that you were talking about. Sometimes I want to knock on wood when we have a bump like that, but those students more, no, mostly ride the school bus. And also like our child in transition kids take taxis. So they have that specific time to get to that bus or anything. So that might be a thing we can look at.
Just a follow-up comment if I may, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I think it's, it's great. I hope the trend holds and I, you know, and so I will also knock on wood over here. I just know that that was an area of concern that we heard from the community as well as um, I think some board members mentioned that um having a start time that late without um having the same level of support for middle school students might be a problem. And thus far, the data hasn't, hasn't uh indicated that that bears out, but um I, I think this is worth monitoring and I hope we continue to review this data on a regular basis. Uh, maybe not in the same formal way that we have our goal monitoring process, but um at least for the next few semesters, if not the next few years, I feel like we, we owe it to the community and for those who still would be interested, if given the choice to revert back to all schedules to, to continue to look at this data and scrutinize it. Thanks.
Member Higgins? Dono or member Lessons?
Thanks. Um, thank you for the report and thanks for the questions that have come forth so far. I'm just, I'm wondering about the chronic absenteeism or really any of this data. Sort of post-COVID, my sense is that nationally, chronic absenteeism has been a challenge, but people have been working on it. Do we have any sense of how the progress that we appear to have made aligns with national trends? Are we an outlier? Uh, like where do we fit in a, in bigger?
We didn't look at any kind of comparison to other places at all, did we? There you are.
We, we did not for the purposes of this slide, but that's something that we, we could take a look at and um provide an update maybe in the board connect.
Yeah, that, I think that's just helpful to under, I mean, we are a part of a, a bigger narrative and um I'd be curious to know whether we're making head, you know, making gains or um sort of part of a uh, part of a recalibration of a lot of kids and families across the country.
Member Bellamy.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for this. I mean, it's hard after a semester. Not quite a semester, just over a semester, I guess, to get this, to try to figure out whether, whether it's working. But I do thank you guys for the information. So in terms of uh, and I know you were just giving us uh information on attendance and absenteeism, F rate. Party, those are all indicators um of how kids are getting to school and when they're getting to school, I guess. So uh, transportation wise, are we doing okay with the schedule? I mean, do we have any um, I mean, are we, cause I know we had to.
I think Mr. Anderson can have an answer about that.
You may not have any.
Um, initially, when the school year first started, because there were so many changes to include sixth grade to middle school, there, it took the traffic engineer about a month to redo all the lights and everything else. The other piece happened was a lot of people who were driving um started putting their kids on a bus again. And, and so the, the traffic flow got better. Um,
I, I haven't heard any complaints on the, on it. I just wondered if we, that was.
You know, I got a lot of emails the first month of school and then they really tapered off and
Okay.
Other than buses getting rear-ended by a car and being late, things like that um that are kind of normal in the city, but.
Okay.
With it, with the elementary schools going first, the elementary buses have been pretty close to being on time this year. It's the, usually they were the ones that were having the hard time. Because if you're late in elementary, it was the last ones to get to school and the last ones to be picked up. We don't have a really good way to compare it to other years right now, but I do know that it's gone, the elementary has gone down.
As we continue to get um concerns, mostly with flipping elementary with, I can't remember if it's middle or making, making elementary last, I guess. And that, that's something, I mean, I don't know that we don't need to discuss it today, but any, any impacts on uh PLC, on the PLC Mondays and how that I know what it looks like for, for attendance. But it, any impacts of that? I know we, we started a lot of things at the same time and they're considering what the chaos could be. I think it's going pretty good, but at the same time, um, what do you guys think?
So we had PLC start a year ago.
A year ago, right.
So the difference now is just PLC, those days are pretty, quite a bit later now. Um, for some of them, the elementaries are kind of right back to where they were pretty much. Um, but we don't really see a significant change in this, in the absenteeism and that on those particular days.
On those days. Okay.
Yeah.
And then I guess the other part is, I guess I would like to maybe hear in some way from the principals and the teachers on the start times. And I, I know they felt, you know, they talked to you guys and they respond to you guys, but I, I would at some point, I don't know how you would do it, but maybe we could have a work session with a few principals from each level uh to talk about start times and, and impacts beyond what we're talking about here today. That's just a request. And that's it for me. Oh, I did have a follow-up childcare. I know member Jacobs asked about childcare in the morning. Um, what about after school? I mean, is that especially at the elementary level? Are we doing, we, are we partnering?
We, we still have in, in most schools that Jim kind of has the, probably the best data on that.
We, we do have several schools with head start programs. We also have schools that have their own initiatives to provide after-school care. Um, and we're working with a potential um organization for all-day childcare at an elementary school sometime in the future.
Oh, good to know. All right.
Some of the things that we heard early on was it was going to be actually easier to find some of the employees because it wasn't broken up into before and after. It's mostly just after a bigger chunk of time.
Okay.
Member Chickens?
Yeah, um, Mr. Anderson said four words, I think, that, that, that piqued an area of interest. Um, but maybe traffic having improvements and I'm assuming that came from or a traffic engineer at the MOA and I would imagine that those folks don't deal a ton in anecdotal evidence. And so I was curious if, if there's any data from the MOA we've actually received as to traffic improving due to this change and then more students taking the bus. Is that something we actually know or is that?
Um, I can check. I know that um specifically, you know, Mayor's I can check. I know that specifically, you know, mirrors hands shoe Romeg. The traffic engineers spent a significant amount of time adjusting lights at the Abbott Loop building. They, they adjusted those lights repeatedly until traffic got better. But I don't think we have any way to know exactly how many students transition from car to bus. I don't think that kind of data would, would exist. Other than we know in the beginning of the year, especially with brand-new sixth graders going into middle schools, there was a lot more vehicle traffic and it got less, but we didn't have anyone out there counting the number of cars that went through or anything like that.
Mr. Jacob, I follow. So two follow-up questions. Do we count our, our ridership on bus? So like how many students are assigned to the bus? And then if, to, to, I guess that was a follow-up question to the, to the, the first half of what I asked. If the MOA has any data or has done any analysis year to year as to what traffic looks like? And if they have done any research on it, I, I'm not asking anyone to do new work, but if something already exists, I'd be happy to look at it. Thanks.
I haven't seen any research from the MOA, but I can certainly reach out to them and see if they have the data from the first couple of months. Next school year, we're already piloting it now. Where we'll have, every bus will be tracked by GPS. Parents will be able to go online and see where the bus is at. And as a result of that, as a child gets on a bus, they'll basically log in with a swipe card or, or something. And so at that point in time, we'll have very accurate data on bus ridership, but we don't have an automated system to collect that data right now other, other than the pilot that we're running. But it, it will show, the driver will be able to see exactly where the child's supposed to get off. So we do track children all the time. I think member Halloman probably helped do this in the past where they get off at their friend's house and then the parents little upset and, and we might spend an hour or two trying to find out that their child is at a friend's house. But at least once we have this system fully operable, we won't have to pull the video to look for the child to see where they got off to confirm. It'll all be digital and we'll know that they got off at the right spot.
Any other questions? Uh, member Bellamy.
I was just wondering, do we have any, I know one, I, every so often we get an email about the hardship to staff. And I, I'm just wondering if we have any. I, it really seems to me that people are settled and they're making the best of this as they can.
You know, I think that when you, I think if we, we haven't like polled staff or anything like that, but what I have heard from elementary teachers is most of them love it. And I haven't heard that from middle school teachers.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
And checking back, yeah, member Higgins, did you have a question or? I'm not sure if he's having difficulties connecting or not. But it, it does seem strange to go a whole meeting and not hear his voice, but anyone else with a question?
Mr. Chair. Uh, member Jacobs. Yeah, not, not the purpose of the, this work session, but I'm curious if it's, if the schedule, if the bell change and the order change has benefited. Or there's, there's perceived benefit among elementary school teachers. And what I think I recall from previous briefings by Mr. Lang is that elementary educator positions are the biggest area of need for the district. Do we know if that's helped reduce vacancy rates year over year?
So just specific to this change, we've only, you know, lived with the, the time changes for one year. So we don't have good comparable data. You know, over multiple years, but that elementary vacancy rate has been trending upwards. We know that. And so I haven't looked at whether or not this year, I mean, this year it went up. And so, but I don't know if that, if there's even any correlation there. It's, it's difficult because I think there's a lot of other factors that are driving that vacancy rate. So I don't, don't really have any good associative data to, to pair that up with the change of start, school start times.
If I could just add to that, that's a great example of something that can be affected by multiple variables, which could include start times. But also just as one example, this current year, at this current fiscal year, we're delaying the hiring timeline slightly while we anticipate changes to funding. If that timeline is delayed by too long, that could also have an impact on staffing. So again, when we look at this data a year from now, we may see a slight uptick in vacancies, but that would be more of a driver of a budget process more than start times. So that's just one example for how complicated this is and why a rigorous analysis would be prudent if the board wanted to understand the impact of this for decision-making purposes.
Member Bellamy, did you?
No, I'm okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none, the chair would entertain a motion for recess into executive session. Well, in that case, I'll just do it without a motion. We are in recess to executive session. We'll reconvene at six PM tonight.